We're good.
We're good?
Okay, welcome everybody will stand and listen to the allegiance. Please remove your cap.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, welcome everybody. Is called a meeting to order? Any public comment?
We do have one President Lambright Les Heidly. Mr. Heidly was immensely professional at last board meeting that I was here, and I'm sure it'll be that way today, so I'm not going to read the litany of rules.
My name is Les Heidly. I'm Westview teacher of nearly two decades. I'm the Westview Education Association co-president, and I'm here representing all Westview teachers. I want to thank all the teachers and community members who are here and those watching the live stream at home that have given our students and school corporation the utmost support in every way possible. The Westview Education Association voted yes to ratify their 2025-26 contract tonight. Positive strides have been made this year through negotiations and mediation with our administration and school board. We are confident that with expanded transparency and improved communication, that all staff can look forward to continued growth and movement in our salary and benefits in future years. We know Westview wants to have the most competitive and attractive contract in our county and region. We do have the best students any school district could ever hope to have, and our teachers will bring their absolute best to those kids every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Need approval of the minutes for last month? Jeff, I need a second. Toby, all in favor raise your hand. That's three oh. Reports? No ISBA or anything? Policy?
All right. I have some I-Learn checkpoint data for you guys. So I-Learn checkpoint, just a reminder, last year they switched over to checkpoints throughout the year. So I-Learn used to just be a summative assessment that was given in about April. It's now checkpoints. They've added those in, so they take it. They have three checkpoints throughout the year. We take ours in like October, November. Then they take one in January, February, and then March, and then they take the summative in April. Checkpoints are not a part of the summative score. They are meant to be a formative assessment for the teacher. That way they can get their results back and they can see how their students are doing on the standards throughout the year and not waiting until the summative at the end. So it's nice for the students. It's not a high stakes test. They can get it. Teachers can use the results to help improve students. So just, I like to just see where we're at, see where we're at as a corporation. The first page is broken down by our entire corporation. You can see our summative last year, scores right beside the checkpoint one scores and then beside our goal. And then it does break down by school as well. So just kind of some overall themes. We're still seeing our math stay very high, very close to our end of the year goal that we're wanting to see. ELA still, you know, our area of improvement. Excited to see where we're going to go with that as well. And then the last page covers our math PSAT and our ELA PSAT data. Again, this is, we're performing very well. Just like Les said, we have awesome students. We have awesome teachers that bring their best to them. And so again, continuing to see really good scores. This is the first year that we did a ninth grade PSAT as well, so we can, you know, kind of see where students are at before they take their SAT. So good scores there. Yeah, everybody's doing really well. Everybody's working really hard. They took this in October. So just to update on where we're at assessment wise. Any questions? The next thing that we have, our Jezlyn and I are kind of talking, we're going to kind of talk together on this one. We're going to share some sped data with you guys. You guys know I always like to make sure that we talk through our data, breaking down by, you know, free and reduced, our EL populations and our sped populations. And sometimes that data can just be a little different to understand because it's measured in just a little bit of a different way. And it's harder to see our growth and where our students are at when we're looking at it as a whole picture. So we wanted to, you know, work together and really talk through where our data is at right now, specific to sped. We are seeing a lot of really good trends with our sped data right now. So what I did with this is I broke it down by cohort so that you could actually see how our students are growing by cohort. So this is our I-Learn math. You can see at the top what the different colors represent. So we have went all the way back to 2022 and then all the way to 2025. So it moves from left to right. The classes down at the bottom, like class of 2033 is our current fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, and then all the way on the end is our current eighth graders. So you can see in almost all of our grades, especially those as they get a little bit older, our trend is going up. So if we look at our eighth graders, which would be the class of 2029 in math, last year we had eight percent of our sped students passed I-Learn math. This year we had twenty seven percent. So really cool to see that trend going up. And Jezlyn, you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, so this, this pattern actually kind of matches learning patterns with students with disabilities. So traditionally, students who have learning disabilities grow at a lower rate than their same age peers. And so traditionally, when we qualify a student with a learning disability, that happens right around third grade, fourth grade area. So to me, this data shows that the more we plug them into programs, give them those intense interventions that they need right at their level. As we keep doing that consistently over time, we're starting to see that growth. And I think that's why we see that flip in scores. So I think that's kind of, we should highlight that as, as we get our kids into our programs and expose them and give them the accommodations they need to access their education. They are getting there. It's just taking us a couple of years to see that flip, so.
And it was pretty cool to see, I mean, looking at class of 2023, 2030, and 2029, there is pretty big growth from, you know, last year especially to this year. So a lot of really good things happening there.
Is there something different in the fifth grade one? Is that, kind of is that, am I getting at the 2032 one? Is that, I mean, it doesn't look, the others are?
Yeah. Yeah, it kind of this first one, like 2033 and 2032, both of those, you know, they had more pass that first year were kind of. But I, I do feel like
Where we're at now.
It depends also on your cohort. We have some students who have
Higher means.
Intellectual disabilities. We have some students with learning disabilities. It usually depends on that makeup. But then when you see that trend over time, it is trending up where we want. Once we start pouring in those interventions and building in those supports that they need to be successful.
It will be really interesting to see if that class, by the time they get up to eighth graders, if we start to see them go up.
Yeah, I was just curious if it's a different mix of folks, in terms of their nature, what makes that?
Yeah, definitely.
Great questions.
Then I did the same thing with ELA. So you can see, you know, where we're at ELA wise. This one's pretty, I mean, almost the fifth all the way up. They're all making growth. I mean, fifth grade, they stayed the same, but that's pretty cool. And we know that ELA is the area we want to show, you know, continued growth as an entire corporation in. So to have eighteen percent of our eighth graders pass I-Learn last year feels like a really, really good, big success. Anything you want to add there?
No, again, kind of similar patterns that we saw with the math too.
This next one I'm really excited about.
This is my favorite one.
I know, this is I-R-E three. And you guys know how hard I've like really poured, our teachers have poured in I-R-E three. Our corporation should, like, I-R-E three is amazing. We should be very, very proud. And this is incredible. Kudos to our special ed teachers. Kudos to our gen ed teachers. This is awesome. So you can see in 2022, we only had forty four percent of our special ed students pass I-R-E three. This year we had seventy six, this past year we had seventy six percent of our sped teachers pass. So that is awesome. Again, hopefully this year we just see that even go higher. That is a huge celebration, and I'm so proud of our people for accomplishing that. So you guys know how I-R-E three is near, near to my heart. So it feels really good.
It feels good.
All right, I'm going to let Jez and talk a little bit more about you.
So RDA stands for results driven accountability. And it's kind of a measure of special education and how we're performing as a district. So we're going to kind of go backwards. So I really want you to look at the top where it says total result score. So this is our most recent data that we've gotten, and we got a score of a thirty one. And Morgan, I'll have you click through. Last, the year before that, oh, I think it was a, yeah, we were at twenty, and the year before that, we were at seventeen. So in 2022, we're at seventeen for an overall score. And this past year, we were at a thirty one. And we've really made small incremental changes that are giving us big results. And so it kind of breaks it down. You're going to see I-Learn, which Morgan just talked about. That's one of those big, we get several points for that. You're going to see over there, well, here's I-Learn. Both of those top ones there are I-Learn. Then the bottom one, you're going to see percent of students with disabilities who were proficient. Then you're going to see I-M, which we are only allowed to have one percent. Students take that assessment, which that's
You have to say what I-M is?
It's a, it's a test that
You can tell that.
I'm sorry. It's a, it's a, is it standardized?
It's, yeah, it's an alternate, it's the alternate assessment for I-Learn. So those students do not participate in I-Learn. They participate in I-M. And it's a standardized test that's just for, for students with more severe disabilities.
More usually intellectual disabilities. And you can only have five or one percent take that assessment.
It's usually our students are in applied skills.
Yep.
Those students participate in that.
So we were able to kind of get more points in that area. And then that last one is our general, our, our diploma graduation rates there. So those have helped us. So we have looked really closely at those scores over the past couple of years. And we were pretty proud of that thirty one and kind of where we're headed. So still things we need to tweak and focus on, but we are trending in the right direction when it comes to those state.
One of the things I mentioned real quick is that we have always prided ourselves in that when we get a student who maybe is learning differently ours in, in special ed, if they are on diploma track, is to get them their diploma. And I think that's one of those things too that, that is unique to Westview. That's not always true. You know, sometimes people will try to reclassify students or minimize the number of special ed students who are actually on diploma track and take them off. And I think that's one thing Westview has done really well is to stick with and really encourage and, and do some nice things when it comes to getting the diploma for, for all of our kids, so.
So this measurement was done, when was this done? And when's the, maybe the next one?
It's done every year. They just don't release the results always in a timely manner. So we should be getting twenty five results.
Okay, soon, okay.
They typically come out in December, but last year I think it was February, so.
So I'll talk to that next year, you'll see how.
And then this is just some miscellaneous sped data that I, I would like to highlight. December first count is when we kind of take a census of all the students with special education services within our district. And as of December one, we had three hundred and student, three hundred and one students who fall under the special education umbrella. We've completed twenty five evaluations since August. Anna Tajinski, our new school psych is working her tail off, and that's a pretty, pretty good number for us. She's done eight initial evaluations and four of them were preschool, so that's always an experience for her. And the other thing that I'm very proud of and wanted to highlight was our, just the experience of our sped team. When we combine our mild intervention teachers along with our applied skills teachers, we have a total of two hundred and ninety-two years of experience, which is just phenomenal, which averages out to about seventeen point two years per person, which we do have some outliers, but overall, we have a very, very, very experienced sped team. And I think a lot of these numbers speak to that. We have longevity and they work hard. I've been very proud to kind of inherit them, and I'm thankful for the solid foundation that they've given me. And they've just been a blessing to me and have given me encouragement when I needed it, but also that safe place to land. And they're just, their quiet consistency has been remarkable. They've been resilient with some changes with our state paperwork. And I'm just, we're very, very proud of who I get to work with and have on my team. I also want to highlight Jeff Radell, who's our county director for LaGrange for the co-op, and Katie Yoder, who is our executive director for the co-op. And want to say thank you for taking time to answer all of my questions, which I give them a lot. And then she just, she's mentoring me, meeting with me, and really plugging me in to help me network with some other directors in our community, which is very nice. So Katie actually is going to highlight some of the things that our special ed cooperative does for us as a district. So we'll kind of turn the floor over to Katie for these next couple of slides.
All right, well, thank you for having me. I promise I'll only be a few minutes. I just have about twelve slides to go over with you. So I am the executive director of the Northeast Indiana Special Ed Cooperative. I have been the director now for about eighteen months, but been with the co-op for about ten years now. So who we are, Westview is one of our twelve districts. So we were established in nineteen seventy. We are the largest cooperative in the state of Indiana. We have twelve districts with approximately forty-one hundred students with IEPs that we provide services to or help provide different guidance or things like that too. I employ about a hundred and thirty employees. And our mission at the co-op is that through a cooperative effort, we believe that every student learn, grows, and is valued. So some of our leadership team, I, I thought it was great that Jezlyn highlighted how many years' experience. I didn't add them all up together, but. So I am the executive director, and then I have four county directors or assistant directors. As Jezlyn said, Jeff Radell is the director in LaGrange County. But I just wanted to highlight how many years' experience. So we meet often as a team of five. And so Westview has a county director, but really they're getting five directors. They're getting all that advice. So if, if there's an issue, Jezlyn might call Jeff, but then Jeff might be texting the rest of us and saying, we have this situation, and so we can kind of work together on that. The, the disabilities next to our names are how we started in special ed. So all of us, all five of us began our careers as teachers in special education. So our three guys there all started in emotional disabilities. Rachel was in applied skills, and I taught resource for my first seven years. And then we are also all very active in state initiatives. We're a part of ICASE and Council for Exceptional Children. We serve on state committees, which has also helped us continue to have a voice at the table and to advocate for special needs. So Westview obviously has a lot of their own programs, but then the programs that we offer are to what we call low incidence. So programs that have less students in them. And that's why the cooperative works. That way we can share services with other schools around us. And so these are some of the, the programs that we offer and the services that we offer. And so if you have students with any of those disabilities, we, we are, we employ those people and help stack the classrooms and things like that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Let's say like for behavior or autism teams, do we handle, do you handle, I mean, it's just, we're getting into details. Do you handle all severities of that? Or do we, do we, do you have connections or relationships with autism special or, you know, or behavioral specialist, you know, organizations?
We, yeah, so
That we have, I mean, there's several of around here.
We, we handle all levels. As a public school, we're required to. And so, so we, we do handle all levels. We do work with programs in the counties. So like ABA centers, students are attending those when they're transitioning back. We try to work closely and have good partnerships with them to help make that transition back a smooth one.
I, I think, what I think maybe we glossed over, when they say this is how many staff they have, some of that staff are in our buildings every single day.
That's what I understood.
Like they have our, so some of the co-op teachers actually reside here and work within our own buildings. And I think a couple might even be here tonight. So.
Shout out to that second row.
That's good, no thanks.
So I did want to, just one of these slides, I, I couldn't sit here and talk about the co-op if I didn't talk about our amazing staff. And we really do have really great staff that we work with every day. I, I second that. Shout out to the second row. I mean, they show up every day and they work really hard. So we're very fortunate to have lots of dedicated teachers, paraprofessionals, therapists that truly go above and beyond what we would expect of a lot of people. We have skilled school psychologists. We employ one nice sick nurse that goes around to all twelve of our schools and works mainly with our applied skills programs. And then I have an awesome office staff that keeps all the paperwork going, coming and going, and all the data reporting to the state. So everybody's focus is always on what, what's best for our students and what do we need to do to make their education better. We offer professional development. So we, we have quarterly department meetings. So if you're an emotional disabilities teacher, you come to our office once a quarter. Sometimes we do those virtual just to keep the teachers closer to their home base. We offer what we call pop-up training. So we, two to three a month, we do these virtual. So I have somebody that wants to teach on maybe different kinds of behaviors. We offer this pop-up, it's an hour. And teachers can join us virtually that way. And we started doing these pop-ups to really help keep teachers in their classrooms. So they get professional development, but they're, they're working with the kids the majority of the time. So those pop-ups are either like seven thirty to eight thirty or two thirty to three thirty in the afternoon, just so they're missing just a really short window of time with students.
I do want to highlight, it's not on here, but Katie did a tremendous amount of legwork with our new special program system where we're writing IEPs. It's a new system for the state. She spent a tremendous amount of time troubleshooting all of the issues that came with that, had question forums for us all to populate questions in, and she would respond to those in a timely manner, but really worked her tail off to make sure we were all supported here with that new paperwork system. So I was so incredibly thankful to have that as a resource, especially getting started here, because that system was a beast. So that was great professional development.
So all of our professional development, it's always feedback driven. So at the end of every year, we send out surveys to all of our special ed staff and just say, what do you need next year? And so then all of our training is based around what, what the needs are. Part of being one of the largest co-ops in the state means that we get to have some pretty unique programs. I am not sure anymore if we're the only ones in the state that have programs similar to this, but when these programs began, we were the only ones. So the first one I want to highlight is our Bright Horizons program. That is a day treatment program for our students with significant behavior needs. So we rent a building, an old elementary school from Prairie Heights, and that's where we have, we have kindergarten through twelfth grade. Right now, we have twenty nine students out there. We have three teachers. We have some paraprofessionals. We have a counselor. And then we have a supervisor that kind of oversees the day to day of those. So these are students that have maybe started in gen ed and worked their way through and are just not regulated enough to be successful in a typical public school. And so we try them out at Bright Horizons, and we really truly work on their behaviors and what they need to get back to their school and try to get them back to their school as quickly as we can.
I think currently we only have two students in that program.
How many?
Two.
Two.
Out of three hundred and one, so. It's pretty good for us.
What, what's unique about that program is prior to that program, it's like going from the public school possibly into a residential placement.
Right.
And when you think of residential, it's extremely expensive. And then the state kind of, when we started this program, I don't know how long it's been in place, quite a while.
I think, I want to say two thousand nine, but it was early two thousands.
But when we created that program, it was because we had kids in residential that were costing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars over their time in school. And so by the co-op, being able to be a part of a co-op in, yeah, we only have two students in it, but if you think if those two students weren't be successful here and we'd have to put them in residential, what the cost, that cost would be astronomical. Whereas this program, we're able to actually meet their needs, support the families, keep them somewhat closer to home, and avoid some of that catastrophic, what I would call catastrophic expense that can sometimes be tied to special ed.
This, this is obviously state funded through the state's program. I didn't know how the brighter, how's the brighter?
Well, it's, it's federally funded because the federal funds are, so it's your federal funds that come to the co-op. And then it's a shared expense among the twelve schools. It's a good question. And so the Choice House is the same way as far as funding goes. It is a program that is supported by the twelve schools. And this is for adult students with intellectual disabilities, so eighteen to twenty-two. Students in Indiana can stay in school until they're twenty-two. And so we created this program we call Choice. For our students, they come, we have a beautiful house now in Kentville that was built by Impact Building Trades a couple of years ago through a grant. And so the students come to this house every day, and basically they learn how to be as independent as possible. So they're coming to the house, they do cooking, they do shopping, they do cleaning. But then they also all have jobs. And so we, some of them are paid jobs, some of them are volunteer jobs. We have a couple of kids that go to, maybe they go to work every afternoon. We have others that are at the house more, and maybe they're only going to their volunteer job once a week. It really depends on the stage they're at. But these kids are treated like adults. They call the teacher by her first name. You know, if, if they're going to be sick, they need to text her, and they're learning those, those job skills. But we're, we're also very in tune to what their goals are. And so we have students that come to us and say, I want to learn to drive a car. And so then we work on driver's training with them. Or we had one student two years ago and said, you know, I never really learned how to read, and I really want to learn how to read. And so that was the goal for that student. So it's, we do similar things with a lot of the kids, but then we also have some really personal goals that are important to them. When students leave, a lot of them maybe go into some group home settings or assisted living. Some of them live at home. We've had a couple of kids that actually have lived in apartments by themselves. So it's been a pretty successful program. It's one of my favorite places to go spend some time.
We have one student in that room right now.
And then this is a newer development from, from our cooperative and something that we are super proud of. As you all know, education is just hard, and finding good qualified special education teachers is becoming harder and harder, especially for those programs that we work with and that we hire. Those low incidents, working with kids that have major behaviors or low intellectual skills can be pretty challenging. And so we've developed this new teacher academy. So for any of our new teachers that are coming into the co-op, they go through first a week-long boot camp that we provide, and it's basically special ed one-on-one. And so we're kind of, we're doing a lot of different activities, teaching them about different behaviors, teaching them about lesson planning and how to just create a schedule, which can be pretty confusing when you have different grade levels and kids coming and going all the time. We have a program supervisor that works with all of our new teachers. So they go to this boot camp, but then for the first two years that they're with us, the new teacher supervisor, she goes around with those classes almost weekly and says, what can I help you with this week? And so it's not that we're just putting teachers into the classroom and saying sink or swim. We're, we're right along beside them, helping them meet whatever challenges they're having at the time. So that's for the first two years. And this has really increased our retention rates. We're also getting a lot of new teachers. You could probably go to that. So we've hired, over the last three years, we've hired fifty-four teachers for our cooperative. We've retained thirty-eight of them, which is a seventy percent retention rate. Currently, we have eighteen teachers on an emergency license.[1711.72] This means that we've hired someone who is not licensed in special education. Because we could not find anybody that was qualified to fill those positions. So this new teacher academy is really important to be able to provide those teachers. They're all enrolled into some sort of college program, transition to teaching or something like that. But this is our way of making sure that our students are still getting all the services and all their needs are still being met. While we have teachers that don't have their specialized license yet. It's also, there's not a lot of, similar to the Choice House and Bright Horizons, there's not a lot of programs that have this type of. A lot of, a lot of schools have mentors or different, but to have a week-long boot camp and then to have that constant support. Through the first two years of their teaching, that doesn't happen a lot of places and so. You know, we're in rural Indiana, it's hard to attract teachers to our area sometimes and so this is one benefit of. Hey, you come work for us and you're gonna have all of the support and we make sure that we back up what we say.
How long is that program, like if they were getting their certification, how long is it?
Well, it depends how much college they had previously, but most can be done within two years. So part of that new teacher academy, we get a grant through AWS out of Fort Wayne. They just approved in May, the new teacher supervisor and I, we worked really hard on on our new proposal. And they awarded us sixty-two thousand dollars over three years, so we're, we were really excited about that. And we use that money for that week of boot camp, it supports our supervisor a little bit. But then also to provide resources, curriculum, just classroom supplies, you know, starting up a classroom as a brand-new teacher is hard. So just providing some of those things to keep money in the teacher's pocket. Then our last slide, you know, we're just continuing looking ahead, we're trying to. We are always brainstorming ways that we can provide better students, uh, services to our students. We're always looking at our programs, what kind of supports can be offered, so. We're hoping that we're gonna be around for another fifty-five years. Any questions or? Thank you.
We will ask you about Jess later.
She's been fantastic.
Miss Yara, transportation.
So I had two drivers in the last couple of weeks pass their driving tests, so they received their CDLs. One of them took a route right away and started on Monday, she's doing fantastic, kids love him, he's doing great. The other one, he's just not a hundred percent sure that he wants a route right now, a little disappointed, but we'll figure it out. So at least I have another driver, he's shadowing right now just to kind of get a feel for everything like the pickups. So Deb Pooley, she is actually our trainer and she's now training Christina Mullet to become our trainer. So Christina has to shadow under her for a year through the Federal Motor Clearing House. So that's going very well and I mean to have two of them pass that quickly, I'm, they're doing a great job with that training. And then for buildings and grounds, I have photos in there, the old mural in Shipshie, that's the first picture. And then the second and third is what the new one was and the Shipshie staff helped create that with Harley. And then that was just installed just a couple of weeks ago, it looks really good, yeah, so it looks really nice. And then we also got new conference signs in the gym. They're beautiful, it looks so nice, it's centered in the gym. So it looks really good and Jeff Marchant kind of took the lead on that and. Came in over fall break and put in a lot of hours and got it all done, so it was up and ready to go before our first home game. So shout out to Jeff and to Randy Christner for putting in the extra time and getting that done, they did a really, really good job. So that's all I have.
Randy's not here, no technology, so, Miss Kendra.
Going right into building renovation updates, talking about the finances, we have just about eight hundred thousand dollars in outstanding invoices. With all of our contractors, I really was hoping we'd be able to write all those checks this year, but it looks like we won't. We are in the final stages, substantial completion is getting so, so close. But really until that happens, the ink's not dry, the check's not even printed. Do you have any questions on the CPF finance, or excuse me, the building renovation?
So were you finding the, so this, is this? The question that I always ask, is this a dragging out, is it a weather issue, are you guys getting frustrated with these folks? Is it, what are the, are we on track, I mean, it's, it seems like we are, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, at Shipshie we do have a contractor issue that we're working out, so I've been going over weekly, couple, sometimes it's a couple of times a week. Just to get on it and now the. The person that they have sent has canceled on us last two weeks, so we showed up and she has not. So we gave her a deadline as of yesterday to get stuff done, so we're working on it, I have another meeting on Monday, we're not gonna include her. It's just gonna be with FCI and myself and.
They'll work with you and like their to do and get their attention.
They will.
It's a CMC project, right?
Yeah.
So FCI, if needed, FCI can step in and do something constructive work themselves, so that's a nice thing. As opposed to.
With the geo bond projects though, that's been a, they have done a great performance. Performance services.
Yeah.
We're very pleased with that and I've I've had a really great working relationship as it relates to the accounting and the the finance side of things. I'm so impressed, I don't feel like I have to really even babysit any invoice that comes across my desk. Whereas with our CMC projects with using FCI, I have to babysit every single document that comes through. So, you know, it's, it's a big thing to me and you shouldn't miss the little things. And I, so I argue when somebody says, well, there's a lot of things, I I'm gonna miss some stuff. Nope, it's a big project and it's millions of dollars, you will miss nothing, so that's been tedious, but we're doing a good job. Then right behind that is our CPF update. These are our capital projects that we do throughout the year and the bookkeepers, the secretaries, the administrators, the buildings and grounds. The the head custodians, everybody does such a really great job of making sure that the projects that we have approved in our budget. Stay on track and on time and under budget. So you can see right here, we were five percent under budget for our twenty-twenty-five CPF. And the twenty-twenty-six CPF has been sent out to everybody and they know the, 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 the light will turn green January first. I do have just details of everybody's CPF behind this summary sheet. Resolutions, I I don't want action right now at this point, we have them later in the meeting with the other action items. But I I do wanna walk through the three resolutions that will be presented for your action and you can take one motion for all three. The first resolution is to reduce appropriations, lots of fancy litigate, legal jargon in there. But basically this is so that those eight hundred thousand dollars in bills that I owe right now. I can encumber this year's appropriations and pay those bills in twenty-twenty-six, so that's what that first resolution is. The second resolution to temporary transfer funds, that's in the event at December thirty-one, we have any accounts that are in the red. And I gotta bring them into black and so I would use rainy day funds as a temporary transfer to bring them into black. And then I, it's essentially a loan. The last four years we have not had to use this, but it's, it's kind of a fail-safe in case we do. So if I do have to use it, I will report that out to you in January. And then the third and final resolution I would ask for approval is the tax neutrality. Whenever you have debt service, you have to levy a tax dollar for dollar for your debt service. Specifically with our pension debt, we neutralize our local income tax instead of using a debt service levy. And for twenty-twenty-six, we will be making our, our last debt payment for our pension debt. Are we owe two hundred eighty-eight thousand and with our cash balance for our pension debt fund. We will only need about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of our local income tax and that will, that bill will be paying full. And that's, that's been since like two thousand nine, we've been working on that, so twenty-twenty-six is the year. Any questions on those three resolutions? Again, we'll ask for a unanimous motion, uh, excuse me, a unanimous action later on. And then our seventeen eighty-two notice did come, actually came last Thursday. So we were able to have a meeting with Brock Bowser and his team at Baker Tilly. I work really closely with them to monitor our tax rate and our tax amount and what CNAV is gonna do and every, everything tax. This year we thought we were gonna have a seventy-one cent, it ended up landing at a seventy point three eight cents. That's good news because the taxpayer's paying less, we had always tried to manage to a rate and that's. Westview has done a fantastic job of doing that, the reason why it dipped so much this year is due to the certified net assessed value. Actually increased seven percent, which goes against everything we were told from SEA one. But it still happened, so because CNAV went up, tax rate went down more than what we anticipated. Also, you recall, we've been talking every month when, as it relates to budget. We really need to be more focused on our levy amount and less about our rate. Because of that assessed value and all of the changes coming down from SEA one. Any questions on the seventeen eighty-two notice?
We'll see the effects of SEA one.
It it, they're gonna keep coming, something to note with our seventeen eighty-two notice this year. Brock did a good job of pointing this out is, we've never really had an impact from the property tax credits. That's when, excuse me?
The cats, you mean?
The, the, yep, the cap.
Yeah.
The property tax cap, thank you and and that's a result of just a lot of credits and circuit breakers that our taxpayers in Westview experience. The past five years, we've had about eleven thousand dollars, a real immaterial amount compared to a thirty million dollar budget. This year we had a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar property tax cap and that's just money we will not see. We, our, our levy rate is still the seventy point three eight, that is what's collected, but we just do not get three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Never seen that, it's always been about eleven thousand, but that's, that's expected to rise as well. But we were able to sign and return our seventeen eighty-two notice to the DLGF and I anticipate I'll have a budget order. From the director before the year is over.
I think one thing I would add real quick, one of the things, services that Baker Tilly does offer is a parcel-by-parcel examination. And that would be an additional service charge, so you might, because we're starting to be hit by the caps. We might wanna do a parcel-by-parcel and start getting a better understanding of, well, which parcels are hitting the caps, where are they located? Why are they hitting caps and it's nothing that we would have had to worry about before, but now that you've seen you lost three hundred thousand dollars. That you were expecting to get, that might be something Kendra.
Okay.
Will be coming back to you and and talking to you about, I think that we're gonna get some kind of a feel for that, so.
I'm really grateful to Baker Tilly, they have excellent resources, their staff are super knowledgeable. They, they speak plainly, I appreciate that, cause I don't do, I don't speak their language on the day-to-day. So I really appreciate the relationship with Baker Tilly that Westview has. Thank you.
Should we need approval now of that?
We got it later.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one are your action items, I, your consent agenda, I, through K, staff recommendations. If there aren't any questions, we recommend those for approval, Miss Kendra.
Need a motion, Jeff?
Second.
Toby second, all favoris right hand, that's three O.
Okay, additional action items, we have a memorandum of understanding with Westview Prairie Heights and Lakeland. For the Learn to Work Program, you may have heard of this program already, it is underway, it is not a financial cost to Westview. There are grant funds and other things that are actually paying for this, it will be located at Lakeland. Our commitment is that we would potentially send some students there for work-based learning opportunities. So it's never, I would look back and we just never saw a place where you had actually approved our participation. It's been fairly publicized, so we wanna make sure you took action on our participation. Could have some implications for Yvonne in terms of maybe having to provide some transportation depending on the students that would participate. And other than that, it's just our ability to send kids to what we think, what we think is gonna be a great program. So we'd ask for your permission to approve that memorandum of understanding.
My only question, Randy, was how, just kinda like, how many kids are in, do we have in?
If the program is just getting started, our commitment is to send one, possibly two students. And and the big reason why it's a county-wide program and why the Donwood Foundation with, who was the major donor, wanted us to participate. Wanted participation, they don't wanna fund a program and not have a fool.
Right.
So that's why we're being asked to, hey, will you at least make this available to your kids and send some and provide the transportation if necessary to get them there.
All right, Yvonne has more transportation.
Well, that'd be nice if she would for this kind of program, but. Yep, so we had, we were asked for you to take action on that.
Okay, if I need approval, need a motion. Jeff, Toby second, all favoris right hand, that's three O.
All right, we have a Cheer Block fundraiser, this actually took place November twenty-four to the December flirt. So this is kind of after the fact, but fundraisers need to be approved by you, so we would ask for you to approve that Cheer Block t-shirt fundraiser.
You would do all of them or?
Uh, yeah, why don't we do all the fundraiser, that's a great idea, so M, N, and O, so we've got FFA snack. And then we got the Topeka Bake Sale fundraiser.
Okay, honey, muffin, Toby?
I'm all about food. Do we get, do we get any of that food, how does that work? If you pay for it, you can.
All favoris right hand, that's three O.
All right, thank you and then we get to the three motions that Kendra's already explained, that would be P, Q, and R. We'd ask for you to approve those three.
Jeff, Toby, all favoris right hand, that's three O also.
For my report, we have a library appointment, Shannon Chavez, who is our Topeka principal, expressed an interest in participating on. The library board, we would recommend that you would appoint her, I have been in communication with Jeff Reed at Prairie Heights. This is a joint appointment between this board and Prairie Heights, we have one shared appointment to the library board between our two districts. So Jeff is, I sent him the name, he says he'll, he'll take it to his board, they expect approval, so it'd be a joint appointment. To the library board.
So we need a motion for that.
Yep, please.
Jeff, Toby second, all favoris right hand, that's three O, Jeff's gonna get it up there. That's it, move. Motion Toby, Jeff second, all favoris right hand, that's three O. We are adjourned and you students that want your paper signed, you know, one of us three.